Something's changed.
Oh, yeah, that was from Ryan.
So we figured let nature and see.
She did marry years ago when I was here. But she said something. Oh, my nerd. But she is really good at painting, though. I'll tell you, she knows.
Graduate, well, she should.
I know they always come back to you, but you never know when that, you know.
Exactly, exactly.
Forty-seven years. I told her, I said, but you know what? She is most helpful. Like, I'll say, are you there? I always ask each one of them. I'm bored. She writes out. I said, well, and she's the.
Six, five, three. Day one.
One of those.
And one whenever she gets, we're good.
Great. Good evening. It's December thirteenth, 2021. I feel funny that everybody's over this side. December thirteenth, 2021. Like to welcome you to Donnell Middle School. So our first order of business, I would like to call the Finley City School Board of Education to order. Role call, Mrs. Harrington.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Aldridge?
Here.
Ms. Iyer?
Here.
Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to the reading approval and signing of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes from November fifteenth. Then we have a special meeting on November thirtieth and a board work session also on November thirtieth. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Ms. Russell?
Second.
Second. Matt? Any questions? Discussion? Okay, those are approved. Celebrations, Dr. Teich.
Well, we need to vote.
Oh, skip the roll call, a little excited.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, try this again now. See, Dr. Teich is always so excited for you to get up.
On my first place. Okay, well, first of all, I want to welcome everybody who's out there virtually tonight to our board meeting along with the administration and staff of Finley City Schools and our board members. It is hard to believe that I am in my seventh year as the principal at Bigelow Hill, and it's been a very exciting journey. And I know everybody in this room knows that we are a designated STEAM school in the state of Ohio. We earned that designation in 2019. I was very proud of the initiative and the staff that I had at that time and leading innovation in the district. And with the shakeup, I have, you know, the majority of my staff that I've inherited are new. And so I was tasked with the challenge of educating my incoming staff along with my current staff that stayed at Bigelow Hill of what it means to be a STEAM school. And the administration was gracious enough to help fund some professional development for my incoming staff this summer. And it's been ongoing throughout the year. Also, Beth Ann Nissen is our STEAM coach, so she supports the teachers in the classroom with that initiative. And I would have never predicted how my staff would have reacted still positively to this. I'm almost a little scared of what we're taking on because it is huge. And in front of you tonight, I provided you with a map of a garden that we are going to be creating. And it's been a process that we've been working on for the beginning of the school year. Our big leaders in this project have been Beth Ann Nissen, Dennis Doolittle has been absolutely fabulous to work with. He's supporting us so that way we do everything the correct way. And Chris Anders, who had started a garden at Wilson Vance, who's now with Bigelow Hill. And so over the course of the year, we have a big umbrella PBL, which is a problem-based learning unit, that's what that stands for, that's building-wide, which is different than what we did before with my previous staff. So it's been kind of neat that we're all working towards one goal. And so our project is called Finding Bigfoot, and our driving question for our garden is, how can we, as leaders, create a more eco-friendly community and educate our school and neighbors about the importance of conserving natural resources through a school garden? So that's our big driving question for our building. And then, different grade levels and different groups of teachers, we are going to have eight major problem-based learning units, so it's really allows students to be in charge of their learning. We give them the question and they just go with it. And the teachers are facilitators. We bring in professionals in the community to help educate our students. You can see in the packet, there's a list of people who are supporting, supporting the learning with our students and then also community donors that are supporting us with this project as well. I mean, this is huge, what we are doing and what our students will be doing. And just developing their critical thinking, their creativity, their communication, their collaborative skills is just going to be really awesome this year. A lot of the work will come after the holidays and spring starts creeping around. So we're really excited, and it's interdisciplinary unit. So overall, the big standards that will be hit are science, but it also integrates mathematics, English language arts, reading and listening and speaking skills as well. So it's woven in to our day and our curriculum. And Beth Ann has been really great working with the teachers and being that person that reaches out to the community connections. And I think the thing that's really great is, at the end, with these products that we give our students an authentic audience, that it goes beyond our school building. So you guys will all be invited in May for our garden walk that we have planned. But I couldn't be more proud of my staff and I couldn't be more thankful to especially Dennis Doolittle, supporting this initiative in our building. So I just wanted to share everything. I mean, I'm amazed at how well everything is laid out and mapped out for the staff to try to make it as easy as possible for them. But there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of meetings that have gone into this. So I'm just very excited to continue to live as that initiative. It's something I believe in firmly, and I think it's good for all kids. So that's Bigelow Hill.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you so much. We'll look forward to that. Celebrations from the Board of Education. Who would like to start?
I have a couple. I have a couple, yep. It's been a really wonderful media month here in December, early December. The second graders were on a Zoom call with Jay Beersback, who is the chief meteorologist at Channel thirteen. This is actually the news channel that I watch every day, so I was really, really happy to see that. That was great. Special thanks to Denise Ryan for arranging this for the district. That was absolutely wonderful. And then, also on the weather front, December tenth, they were in the front page of The Courier. First graders from Jefferson were pictured with their water cycle in a jar experiment. Students from Laura Longnecker's class observed evaporation, condensation, and then precipitation as they watched the clouds in the jar make rain. And weather sciences, weather and earth sciences, I have always thought were fascinating. In fact, I remember in elementary school, I was like the school meteorologist, and I used to run out to the weather station every day and get the barometer readings and everything and then predict the weather. That's fifty years ago, folks, and I still remember that. So these, great, great projects, great to see that, that's wonderful. And then, also great to see our students in the spotlight. Speaking of the spotlight, FFE, FFE made their rounds, I made their rounds, the holiday show this weekend, it was fabulous. And then today, got to see, you know, reprisal at the Rotary meeting. They were there and sang a few of the songs from that. So seeing FFE twice within a week is awesome. So thanks, FFE, for coming to our meeting and doing that. That was great. So that's it. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. Mr. Aldridge, are you ready?
All right. Great. First, I'd like to start with, I attended the Finley High School Orchestra Concert, the Razzle Dazzle Disney. It was incredible show by our students. It's amazing the talent and dedication of our students to perform at such a high level. Also want to say, great job to Mr. Pressel and Mr. Sheets. They did an outstanding job leading the orchestra. Next is Mr. Payne at Northview would like to celebrate the success of the RUN program, which stands for Reading United with Northview. This is an after-school literacy and mentoring program through the STIT Literacy Grant. Mr. Jim Smarcal and his wife, Leanne, are the coordinators of the program and organize mentors to work with our students on targeted literacy skills. FCS has provided transportation for our students to College First Church of God, who graciously have allowed us to use our facility for the program. Mentors have been recruited from community churches, businesses, and the University of Finley students. And through the first semester, we were able to serve fifty-six of our students. We are currently working on the plan for the second semester of RUN. So I want to congratulate Northview and the RUN program.
Great. Ms. Iyer?
Yeah, so I've been on the music trail as well. I went to Glenwood and to Donnell to the sixth, seventh, eighth grade choirs. And I did the VIP FFE show on Saturday, which was fabulous singers, fabulous programs on all fronts. And I'm going to head to preschool on Thursday. They're having a show coming up. So kind of focusing in the music realm here. And then I'll be moving on to the winter sports in January, so stay tuned. So, yeah, great shows, and thanks to everyone performing and teaching and all of that. And then just a holiday, wish you happiness, joy, peace in the holiday season. Take care, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, Whittier's, wanted to stress that they have fifty students benefiting from Clothe Child tomorrow evening, and they're also finishing up their thirteen days of holiday cheer, which was organized by the Whittier Lighthouse team and shared with the district to collaborate. Last week, they were able to, through one of the theme days, able to collect toothbrushes, toothpaste, and soap that will be donated to several charitable organizations in Finley. And they're hoping to collect some items for Hancock County Humane Society as well. And I think they wanted me to express that they're so happy to be able to give back to Finley as a community, so that's pretty awesome. And then here at Donnell, Roger Storm, a NASA engineer for the Glenn Research Center, is working with sixth-grade students, building a rover vehicle to design and test wheels on a simulated Mars surface, which is pretty awesome. Leadership group is running meetings every Monday. Every Donnell student and adult take part in twenty-one different groups, ranging from graphic design and Donnell TV to sign language and Makerspace. They've had one hundred and seventeen positive referrals this year. And they wanted me to talk about winter sports. Eighth-grade girls' basketball is currently undefeated. Sports is my area that I like to talk about. And then, this one's kind of funny, but the wrestling team had Donnell duels this weekend, and considering that there was no power on the south end of town, they went old-school with flip charts and stopwatches, so congratulations to them that they were able to figure out the old-school, the old-school way of doing wrestling match. So that's it.
Great, okay. I have one here, I want to, congratulations to Pam Hamlin. Last Friday, they, well, first of all, I haven't been out much, you guys know that. Okay, but there was a big meeting of the Ohio Department of Education that was sponsored, and Pam Hamlin through Millstream set up Glenwood Community Room to be able to do that. And so, first of all, always love to celebrate the students first and foremost, but sometimes I think we need to also celebrate the administrators and everything that they have to do, the outside things that you do, other than just kind of be in your office and doing a thousand things there. But anyways, I'm just very, very proud. I want to thank Justin Shank for zooming me in, so I did get to see it. But just the face of career tech education is really changing. You know, and I look back to my days, you know, being career tech director, and it wasn't half the stuff that they have now. But, you know, their accountability, just everything that they're asked to do, and then still teach students, is just amazing. So I want to take this opportunity, Pam, to thank you and to thank Justin, you know, for your lead at Millstream Career Center, because I think we're really, really fortunate that we have them right next door to us in Finley High School. So, thank you, Pam. Okay, we'll go on to superintendent then.
All right, I just have a few. I'm going to celebrate all our students and staff. As you know, it's been a very challenging year again, but our students and staff continue to display a positive attitude and just work through any situation we throw in front of them. But very impressed with our students, and you guys recognized, a ton of our students, but also our staff that continues to work through some challenging situations. So very, very happy with our students and staff, and hopefully they get to enjoy the well-deserved break coming up because they continue to work hard for us, and our staff does as well. So I want to celebrate all our students and all our staff. I also like to point out our transportation department. They're working through some challenging situations, making sure our kids are getting to and from school safe every day. As you know, our number of substitute drivers is not where it needs to be. So every day, they're changing routes, doubling up routes, making sure we can get kids to and from school. So Julie Routsen, the assistant director, Zach Q Tub, the director, and all our drivers and aides, and everyone who works over the transportation department is just doing an outstanding job and making sure our kids are getting to and from school safely. Then lastly, I want to celebrate one of our secretaries, Lisa Fish. Sunday morning, I received a very nice email, and I'll read that to you. It just says, "I just want to let you know how much I appreciate Lisa Fish. Even though I only go to Glenwood office two or three times a month, she always greets me by name, is very friendly, attentive, and helpful. It makes no difference what has happened or what she has dealt with during the day, or if it's eight AM or three PM. She greets you with a smile and takes care of whatever needs to be done." That was sent from staff member Sue Beth Arnold. But if anybody's been to Glenwood, she treats everybody with the utmost respect and is always happy to see people. So I'm happy to celebrate Lisa Fish and all she's doing for us. And that's it.
Okay, great. You want to go ahead with the grant then?
Oh, yeah, just a grant to point out there, another celebration. This is from Kim Plessack in Jefferson Primary, received a grant from the Ohio Arts Council, a big yellow school bus grant in the amount of $294. This will be utilized to transport the students to the theatrical performance of Pout Pout Fish, not until February seventeenth. So a grant will take care of that expense.
Okay. Actually, I did want to add one more, just brief celebration. Again, this has to do with administrators and their love of, you know, supporting education and everything. But I have a 2011 yearbook laying here. I got a text earlier today that said, there was up in a house fire. The family basically lost everything. There was a young lady who was a graduate of Finley High School. And, you know, with all the devastation and everything that happened, she said, "I lost my yearbook. Is there any way I can get another yearbook?" And my daughter called and asked me this. I called, I text Ryan Imke, and within fifteen, twenty minutes, he texts me back and he said, "We'll get that yearbook for..." So, you know, that's kind of like when you make, you know, a big school, be a real small school. So that is very, very special, and this girl is just elated that she's going to be able to get one again. So, thank you. And on to public participation. I believe we have a representative here from employee, representative, right?
Martin, will they be able to hear live stream if she's not at the mic? Okay.
Oh, yeah? Okay, then I'm not. I feel like I really love voice, so.
Use your teacher voice.
So I was going to talk about bus drivers. I have to say, like, had a lot of dealing with bus drivers lately, and today, a couple of bus drivers that I went out and spoke with at preschool, and just, they have a hard job, and they're doing it very well, I feel, and working hard with us to help work with some of these kids that sometimes are a little rowdy and forget about the reasons for being perceived from us. And so I just think that they have a tough job, and they're doing a great job with it. There's nothing else to deal with. Today, Clothe Child was another thing I want to talk about. So all those schools are going to polls, and polls really is such a huge support for Clothe Child. So anybody that doesn't really know all the details of what they do, but, I mean, their employees that work, work with, like, cashier and everything, I think, that's all voluntary. They are not paid employees when they're doing that. And they have programs where they donate to different charities by those employees putting in those hours. And so that's really cool, and to see some of these kids. So last week, I went with Northview, and tomorrow, Whittier, what do you say, at Bigelow Hill. And I'm blessed enough to be able to do all of this. But my little guy at Northview last week, he's a kindergarten, he wanted a suit, that's, he just wanted a suit with his little vest and tie, and just so sweet. So it just really makes for a nice evening. And everybody that puts that together, the people that work on that, the teachers, the counselors, that put that, it's a lot of work. So they do a great job with it. Also, I'm at Bigelow and Northview this year, and I'm part of the RTI team of both buildings, and to see how hard these teachers all work together, I'm so impressed with how everybody is just willing to dig in and, hey, you know what? I can find time in my day to do this with them. And they really, there's one particular teacher at Northview today, or at Bigelow today, Mrs. Suter, who just always, she's always like, "Yep, I will find time, friend him with my group, I'll take him here, let me help, and try an intervention with this," and just, everybody's always willing to throw in, to help out every single second of the day. Lunch monitors have been a real shortage in the buildings, and so at Bigelow specifically, we have teachers that every single day have stepped up and worked in the cafeteria every day. Some of our special area teachers, we actually have one teacher, Rachel Horr, who comes from Northview, drives over and works lunch at dinner while we help us, and then drives back to teacher group at Northview. So just a lot of people that are really going above and beyond right now, when times are tough, but it's great to see so many great people working together. It's encouraging.
Thank you. We have any students tonight? Okay, seeing none. Parents and/or public? Nobody signed it, right? Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. Any from board members or the treasurer? Okay. From the district or the superintendent?
I have none.
Okay. We'll move on to consent items A through F. This is for certificated personnel. Again, we're doing A through F. Take a motion first. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Matt? Second?
Second.
Chris? Discussion? Mr. Roth, anything to say?
Yeah, I'll just point out a few things, then I'll turn it over to Krista Miller, Assistant Superintendent, to explain some of the supplemental corrections that were made. First, I'd like to point out the retirement of Janice Miller. Jan was a teacher for us at Millstream. Unfortunately, her program was cut prior to the 2021 school year, but Janice is eligible to retire after nineteen years of service to the district, so I just want to say thank you to her for her years of service to the district. And then I'll skip down to letter F before I ask Krista to speak. This is the district leadership team members to receive up to, or $22 an hour, up to six hours. If you recall, our district leadership team generally meets several times throughout the school year, and we do that during the school day. With our current substitute situation, we just didn't think it would be prudent to hold those meetings and pull those people out of class. So we're going to go ahead and hold those meetings after school hours and compensate those people who give up their time. We did limit the number of people that are on the DLT, just so we were being fiscally responsible, but it's impossible to pull that many teachers out. But the work they are doing is very important, so we want to continue that work. That is why you're seeing that number of teachers who are part of the DLT. And then I will ask Krista Miller to talk about B, C, and D, some supplemental changes.
Sure, absolutely, thank you. And as you see, we do have some corrections and supplementals. Just to give a brief explanation, as we negotiated a new contract, along with that negotiation process comes negotiating for our supplemental positions and comparing ourselves to some other districts and how they set it up, we felt that we could do better in the structure of which we do that, as well as the compensation plan. So the athletic department, the treasurer's department has worked very, very hard to make certain that we are paying our people what they were owed, now that we have the new system of multiple steps versus two blocks of steps. So in order to fit those folks into the correct steps, we need to make certain we're verifying that appointment so that it was an accurate representation of their experience. And we feel now with our fall sports, we have done that, and now we've got a system in place that they're too forward, that will be proactively reflected rather than going back and fixing. But we felt very strongly that we needed to honor our people in an accurate form with the experience that they have, but do that through verifying the years where they're now placed in the system. So that's why we did have so many corrections in our fall sports. So think about what we're doing and honoring the great people that we have, doing great things. So all your celebrations go back to the people that are willing to do those jobs, so we appreciate them a lot.
Okay.
Hey, can I have a quick question? On the DLT, you have only six hours. How many meetings is that going to be?
Probably, the first one's only an hour, so we're talking probably two hours at a time. The search one's only an hour to get us started, but, you know, you're talking after-school hours when people are tired of being at work all day, so we're going to keep them very short.
So there'll be several in that?
There'll be several in that time, yep.
All right, thanks.
We have a board representative on that, then? Or are you just going to cut back a little bit?
If you're available, I think it was you yourself and you have come to DLT meetings. I believe Laura has come to DLT meetings. Those will be virtual. If you'd like to attend, we can send you an invitation.
Yeah, I will do everything I can to be there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, Mrs. Harrington?
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Good. Motion passes. Continuing on, consent items, this is a single one, G, certificated personnel. Could I have a motion first?
So moved.
Mr. Cooper, second?
Second.
Mr. Aldridge? Okay, any discussion?
Same thing as I mentioned in the previous, letter F, DLT. Sue Beth Arnold is a longstanding member of the DLT, so this is just continuing her serving on the district leadership team.
Anything else? Okay, Mrs. Harrington?
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to consent items, this is H through W. Again, H through W, some on the bottom of the page, and then put a few more on the next page. Make sure we're all in the same place. Motion to accept, please.
So moved.
Mr. Aldridge, second?
Second.
Ms. Iyer? Discussions from the board or Mr. Roth?
All right, I'll point out a few things, and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Harrington to talk about the treasurer's report. But first thing I'll point out is in letter H, it's the resignation of Tracy August from our treasurer's office. Tracy's been with us twenty-two years, and she submitted her resignation. We greatly appreciate Tracy's professionalism and her, her work ethic has been phenomenal for twenty-two years. So we're definitely going to miss Tracy, but she had an opportunity she couldn't pass up, so she has submitted her resignation. Moving on, all the way down to letter N, I always like to point out our volunteers, because like was mentioned before, without the people taking on additional supplementals or volunteering, we cannot provide all the opportunities we provide to students. So letter N, there's a number of volunteers there I'd like to recognize. Kind of along those same lines in letter Q, this year, this summer, we're going to have a youth show choir camp. This will be put on July fifth through the ninth. This is being put on by high school teachers, Krista Bigger, Elisa Fox, and Kevin Manley, for students who have an interest in show choir. So just another example of the endless amount of opportunities our kids have and teachers stepping up to give our students these opportunities. Letter U, letter U is the policy update. If you recall, last meeting in November, we had two policy updates for first reading, and Katie Abbott presented those to you. She presented one point, no, Katie, you didn't present those, I'm sorry. I presented the bus transportation policy 5.02 was updated, and our sexual harassment policy 1.15 were a first reading at the last board meeting. New curriculum, that was Katie Abbott, letter V. Katie presented the curriculums that are listed there, from honors anatomy, physiology, CP anatomy, physiology, CP English and dramatic literature, CP English, dramatic CP English and dramatic literature, CP English, dramatic living through literature, and skills for life adaptive. So this is the night we will take a vote on those. But Katie did a great job of working with the curriculum council and getting those new curriculums. And then I'll skip over W, that will be Pam here in a minute. I just always like to point out in X, the acceptance of gifts. We have three gifts, one for $100 from Brian and Jane Robertson to the trauma-informed care programs in memory of former board member Barbara Dyson. And then we have a $500 gift from the Amber and Ben Patterson family fund to the FCS preschool climbing wall. And then also $100 from Sasha Bolware to FCS preschool sensory room. So very happy and appreciate the donations made by those individuals. And then I will turn it over to Pam for treasurer's report.
Okay, so we had our, you know, forecast meeting recently. I did want to let you know we successfully uploaded it to the ODE website. And the assumptions, if you have any desire to go out and check it out, that's fine. It's exactly like what we ended up with, ending, you know, five years out with about 7.9 million in cash. We will tweak that as time goes on. You know, we tend to know these forecasts for about three, four weeks, and then something will change. But I do think that in the past, in Finley anyway, we don't go in and redo it until again in May. But if we see something drastic, we would, we would do that. So I had had a couple of board members ask me for the typical, which I really like this format. I didn't use it in my past districts where we do the reconciling of the five-year forecast each month to show where we are, to see what we're doing and where we're gauging. So it should have been in your packet, it's color-coded, and it's available upon request or on our afterwards if anybody wants it. So if you had a chance to look at it, you'll do, you'll see that at the bottom, you're probably thinking, wow, we're going to end cash balance at 2.2 million in excess versus the 11 million versus, you know, it looks like we're going to end with 13 million. I caution you with that because in personnel services, let's just, I'll just give you a quick example. So, you know, we have 24 pays, and now that they've leveled off, we've done some retros, we've got some, a few things that we're still tweaking with the contract with the aides. But there are also things that are paid out different times of the year that kind of skew it. So it's basically a timing issue. So like in January coming up, I, in reading some of the negotiated contracts, we pay severances out in January. So as you know, if you retire, you get, you're entitled to some of your days out, your paid sick days out. We pay all those in January. So my preliminary number is at 390,000. So obviously, when you're looking at payroll, when you're looking at that projected 34 million, we're kind of saying, if all things remain the same and every payroll's the same, that's where we'll be. But you know that's not going to be true because you know the next one we're going to have in, the first one in January is going to be at least probably close to 400,000 more, you know, a little bit higher. There's no way to anticipate those amounts too far ahead. Now, we can get a little bit better narrowing it down as we start doing some analysis of this. But you know, with my payroll girl that does that leaving, we may have to, you know, have a little bit of time. But you can do some preliminary estimates on that to give us a little bit better gauge. So it doesn't look like, oh my gosh, the salaries are off a million and seven this month, you know, you're going to end better. I really think that we have to keep a watchful eye on that line. Being here only a few months, I normally like to see trends for two or three years and see. But it was kind of surprising to me that we pay them in January, just different, not bad or good, just different than, you know, usually what I'm used to. So I kind of like that. Now I know the budget for it in every January, and we can build that into some of these formulas so that won't look so skewed. Also, we do pay supplementals. I'm still learning how we pay them. But I believe it's that we pay some at the end of the season, and we pay some halfway through the year, we pay some at the end of the year. And so that's why you see those highs and lows because you're thinking 24 pays, how hard can it be? You divide it up with 24 pays, it should be equal. Well, it's not. And also with substitute, you know, well, our subs come through a different way. But in a roundabout way, there's other things that come through there, FMLA, things like that. So just to kind of warn you why that, why it looks different every month. I'm sure you've been told this by prior treasurers, but just so that everybody kind of keeps that in mind that yay, that would be great if we end with 13 million versus the 11 that we have on the forecast. But the reason is because of timing. So the revenues are coming in pretty much like we anticipated, no big surprises. We're still waiting for the, we did get a preliminary December, two December payments ahead of time. We didn't actually receive the funding, but we received the backing, the background data that they're going to say, they're calling it the calculations. But we have yet to receive the money to make sure that that's what it's going to be. So as you know, they're changing in the way we do our funding through the State Department. So we're watching that really close to see if, is it real or is it memrist? Oh, no, you know, so is it real? Because you know, sometimes the best-laid plans just don't always come out like that. You know, they just, I think the intentions are good, but I do, we are watching Millstream funding the way that that's coming in because, you know, the whole new funding model in a nutshell is to give the money to where the children's being educated. Well, you can't really do that and say, well, so let's say, as we discussed, an open enrollment student living in Liberty Benton School, open enrolls to us, we would just directly get the funds and they would, it wouldn't go to them, and then they write a check to us like in the past. However, Millstream students, we're really watching. They've yet to tell us how we're getting the funding. It appears we're going to still get them as open enrollment. Because that's how you have to code them because there's no, there's no other option. So, but I can't get anybody to answer that down in Columbus. So we're not, we're going to, we're watching. And right now, the first preliminary one shows them as open enrollment coming in still to us. So interesting, but you know, we'll get there. I think the, again, I think there's always good intention to make the budget more fair and more, less complicated for the public. Which, on that happy note, in January, we'll be having our first school finance 101 class in January. I don't remember the date, Kelly's not right here with me, but I think it's the 27th.
27.
Yeah, 27th, at 50 North. We encourage anybody that has any desire, it's, the first series I do is a four-part series. And the first one is school finance 101, very casual. We don't make you sit through six-hour PowerPoint with a quiz at the end. We do do some quizzes, but they're fun, and sometimes there's rewards. It depends on how advanced I get on it. But it really is a great way to sit and have conversation about school finance that's, you know, I try to make it so that it's interesting enough and easy to understand with things that are relevant for Finley City schools. So I'm excited, and I really encourage you to encourage people to come. I know the weather that time of year can be, you know, kind of iffy if it's real bad out. But shouldn't be too terribly bad since it's, what, 50 degrees today? You never know though, could be, could be. So I'm excited for that. So I'm really excited for, like Troy said, for our Tracy August to move on to a wonderful opportunity for her. She'll be greatly missed. And we do have some plans of some temporary help until we can get it posted. So that's about it for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrington.
So we haven't heard anything yet from the state on funding yet?
No, they put out, they put out, they said, we're going to give you your December two payments. So they give us, they gave us the paperwork, but it looked exactly the same. So it looks a little different, like our forecast shows you the, you know, revenue less and the expenditures. But it still is not where I think it's supposed to be. So we're waiting to see, well, we didn't have the money yet either. Always wait till we actually get the money to see if it really matches that worksheet. They're saying now January or February. But it's a start, right?
It's always tomorrow.
Yeah. I just want to get the money, at least, you know, keep giving us the cash part. I think that part's not the problem, it's just, you know, they're busy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrington. Any other questions or comments on treasurer's report? Okay, I want to point out we have a small correction on the agenda here under the consent items. I clearly read H through W, and that also includes X. So I'd like to make that correction, it's H through S.
Okay.
Okay? And that's what we'll be voting on? Okay, but are we ready for a vote, right?
Yep, you ready? Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
And that was H through X, correct?
H through X, uh huh. All right, we'll move on to discussion items. First one is A, 2022, 2023 school calendar, which was exhibit C. Do you have comments on that, Mr.?
Yeah, just a discussion item for you to look at, the calendar. This is based on this year's calendar, 175 student days. First start day for students would be August 23rd. You can look through there. Commencement is always that Saturday, May 27th. So it's very similar to the calendar this year. This is for you to look at. If you have any questions, you can ask tonight or let me know. We did let FEI take a look at it, and Angela was satisfied with it. We did share it in the past. We've had a calendar committee the last two years take a look at it. So I shared that with the majority of the members of the calendar committee. I know Krista and the curriculum directors met as well. We talked about it with our principals as well. So it's been well-vetted. So this is the calendar that I will bring back to you at our January meeting for board approval for the 2223 school year.
Any questions, comments? Move on to B, 2022, on Board of Education meeting dates, exhibit D. Any comments on that?
Yep, we just put in front of you a draft of the meeting dates for 2022 for you to look at and see if there's any conflicts in your schedule. We've, we'll be approving the organizational meeting here in a little bit, which will be January 10th. But we put together next year's meeting schedule for you to view. If there's any conflicts, just let me know. We do have the ability to make changes on those, and we could do that at the January meeting.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you. Those are both considered discussion items, and we'll vote next meeting on January, correct?
Correct.
Okay, on to action items, and there's four items. We will be looking at these separately for a vote. So let's look first of all at the chaperones. I'll let Mr. Roth do this, and he's already presented it once, but I'm going to let him do it, and then we'll do the motion. I'm sorry, do the motion first. Motion to accept, letter A.
So moved.
Mr. Aldridge, second?
Second.
Mrs. Russell? Okay, now discussion, Mr. Roth?
Yep, we previously, the board previously approved this out-of-state trip for band trip to Florida, April 13th through April 18th. They now have submitted the actual chaperones that will be attending the trip there. So we're just approving the chaperones to attend with our band students.
Okay. Any questions? Anything for Mr. Roth? Okay, we'll go ahead and then do the vote, Mrs. Harrington, excuse me.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
That's letter A. Now we'll go on to letter B, need a motion first? This is the organizational meeting date as January 10th, 2022. Can't believe we're 2022 already. Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Russell, second?
Second.
Ms. Iyer? Any discussion, questions?
Very simply, that's the organizational meeting that we're required to have. So we set it for January 10th, 2022, and we'll hold that in the Washington conference room.
Okay. And you'll be bringing in flag, right?
It's already there.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion to approve that meeting date.
We already did. Yeah. Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
I'm sorry, shades of something else that made me laugh about that. Okay, let's go on to item C, OC number 10, transportation insurance meeting. Let's do the motion first.
So moved.
Sounded like Mr. Aldridge and second, Mrs. Iyer, would that work?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion or comments on this, on the MOI?
Yeah, I'll just point, both C and D are very similar. If you recall, in a previous contract negotiations, it was negotiated into those contracts that if the insurance committee called a insurance meeting to better educate our employees who are holders of our insurance, you know, the benefits of an HSA and becoming better consumers of insurance, that we would compensate them for attending a meeting. We had every intention of doing that last year, but COVID situation kind of prevented us from bringing large groups together to honor that commitment. So we've been working hard, and it's taken a little longer than anticipated to prepare a virtual meeting. We worked with UMR and Assured Partners to create a virtual meeting that we will make available to the members virtually through Vector Solutions, it's formerly Safe Schools, which we do all our online training via Safe Schools or Vector Solutions. The good news is it can be viewed multiple times, we can update it throughout the year. And also, moving forward, the compensation part is no longer in the contracts. So we were able to negotiate that out. But I think it's been beneficial for our members. And I think holding this one more time, updating it, making it available to our members, we'll see some benefits from that as well. You know, we're hoping, in previous years, we were able to use wellness funds. With not knowing from the state quite yet where we're going to be with that, there's a possibility that wellness funds could be used again.
For this purpose?
Yes, potentially.
For this purpose?
Yes.
Okay. Question?
Yes.
So when is the next insurance enrollment period?
We're currently in it, right, Pam?
Right, right now.
And when does it end?
The 15th.
Of December?
Yeah. Yep.
Seems to me to have value, we would want people to view this before the 15th. Otherwise, they're going to forget what they saw before, before the next enrollment period. Because the next enrollment period isn't until this time next year, correct?
It's taken us a lot longer to get this out. We'll have it out as soon as, possibly tomorrow. I think the videos are ready to roll. You know, it's been a lot of work to get this taken care of, but.
And we're going to have to extend a little bit of that time, but once we negotiate with the aides to the open enrollment we talked about. Because, you know, we haven't.
Right, right, we have.
We're still in the middle. If I'm under. Can I speak?
Sure.
Okay.
We're discussing.
Don't need my permission.
No, but if I'm understanding what the goal of watching this is, is also for them to understand that. But if I, in doing, I'm trying to do a little research on it to see what we're gaining. And one of the things that I do know is we were just talking about knowledge. So it has seemed to help, and this will be the last time we're doing it. So you know, this way, I mean, they'll still be able to watch it, it just won't be paid, you know. But this is the last paid one in the contract, but, the last year's contract. But they, it appears that they've learned things that they didn't even know about, like just, I know it seems silly, but like GoodRx, you know, they now know. So I asked our folks in the third-party folks, are we seeing a savings? They said, yes, we did, because they didn't know to use it. And so I think it's more of, it's not just on how to enroll in ones, but also some of the things that they weren't utilizing that were just sitting there that could save us quite a bit of money. So I'm trying to quantify what we saved, just for my own knowledge. You know, I just want to know in watching it, what people picked up from it. But that was just one of the examples I was giving. There was another one, but I just, right off the top of my head, we talked about it so late in the day, of some of the things they were able to save.
It's not typically the difference between the plans.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wouldn't.
That's not what the meeting is. So it's just telling you how to save money for yourself. So it'll be good all year long. It's not going to help you make a decision.
On what policy, yeah.
On which policy you choose.
It also includes a very comprehensive Q and A. We, we're one that, for the longer to get out, is we put out a survey to all of Finley City schools so that they could ask their questions under categories, and then whatever the question you have. And then the team went through and answered all of those questions so that it was a more comprehensive presentation that would last beyond an enrollment. The true objective is how to navigate it, what can we do better to serve our staff to make certain they understand their coverage, and then we can also utilize it for onboarding. So it's much more comprehensive than just what plan the best.
Okay.
And what to do to get healthy. Well, well, no, you know.
Or to use the benefits, to use the benefits that are provided.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is.
It's kind of complex.[1785.66]
My understanding is more than four years ago, they had these, had an annual meeting and no one showed up. Okay? Right, no one showed up. And so, so we did this, we initiated this process with some incentive, okay? Because we needed to make a major shift in our health insurance, for the, you know, for cost savings for the district. It was, it was important for all of us to look at that. And so we did that through the insurance committee, and it had significant impact to the district financially, and then I also hope it had significant positive impact to the employees financially. And then, as you were just saying, they enabled them to see what was out there that they could utilize to further, you know, be a benefit to them. So it was a win-win all the way around, and I'm glad we did it. And we took some flak for it, but I'm really glad we did it. And it's kind of, now we've, I think, I hope, that we've proven the benefit of this education process on a yearly basis. It's important to know what's in your benefit package, what's available to you, and hopefully from now on, people will just, just watch it and absorb it, you know, naturally. And so for that, I'm excited. I'm excited that we've made this change, and I'm really excited that the teachers got on board, all the staff got on board and supported this. So, you know, I'm looking at you, Angela, and I appreciate the teachers and all the staff in doing this. So it's nice to hear, thank you. I thought it was just to help people make decisions regarding insurance. It's more comprehensive than that. It would be nice if we could see it, I mean...
Absolutely.
I'd like to see it, so I could appreciate it. Those little things mean so much, so...
And then moving forward, we can use it, as Krista mentioned, as part of their onboarding, so everyone sees it, you know, initially, and then we can update it as we go through the years.
So there's more value, yeah.
That was gonna be my question, is there a way to update it as the plans and policies change?
Yep, absolutely.
We can utilize this presentation to be able to onboard new employees.
And they can watch it multiple times, right? Somebody asked me that today, because if I forget, can I...
It's a requirement, and we're documenting that for our data to provide the reimbursement for that, then it will just be a link to data follow.
And they can look at whenever they forget, you know, because if you don't use it all the time.
Yeah, and even before open enrollment, just having that opportunity, just to refresh, what are some of the...
It'll always be a resource that they can utilize, but it will also be a part of the onboarding package, a little more urge to onboard, you know, bringing the teachers in for two days in the summer, a new teacher, so.
Great.
Yeah, that's the plan, and it's always accessible, and it's also part of onboarding.
Great.
And the Q and A is very appreciated by the teachers, and I said it took a long time, but that's something, it's very much appreciated by me, because I think I probably got lots more questions. They're mostly, because they would all email me tons and tons and tons. I'm sure it's appreciated by the media. And Sherri Rogers, that deals with it, she feels, she's amazing, and she deals and helps us so much with it. But there's just, it was a big change, we went from Anthem to U R, U L R, and so there's just a lot of differences, reapproval, things like that that we've never had. So all these questions explaining all that, I think will be really beneficial to everybody else. So it was worth the wait in that way.
And we can conduct a survey at the end of the year, and where there's gaps that can be filled, we can adjust that particular slide, load it back up, and send it back out. It can be a very fluid, living, breathing resource for teachers.
Is this an Assured Partners virtual presentation?
It's Assured Partners, UMR, and we did the question and answers, so...
Oh, great, so it's a good...
Yeah.
Personalized for our needs, good.
We developed a video of each of them.
Krista and Kelly did a lot of it.
And that's where, when you have a good video like that, it's good to be able to utilize that for long-term.
Right, and whatever feedback we get, if it wasn't a good video, we can remake another one and have that ready.
It's the first round of it, so if there's improvements to be made, we certainly can. When it comes to onboarding, we know that we'd like to add some videos of staff introducing themselves who they are, just to make it even, you know, enrich the video for that purpose. But for this purpose, it does cover the basics of the question and answer and some of the information that UMR provided for us.
So I appreciate Krista's done a lot of the tech work with it to make it accessible in our vector solutions formerly known as Safe Schools, so it took a lot of work.
Make sure it goes off without a ditch.
We'll make sure it goes.
Okay, ready for a vote, Mrs. Harrington?
Okay. Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Upstanding.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
Going on to item D, the FEI Insurance Meeting, MOA, need a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Russell, second?
Second.
Mr. Cooper? Discussion?
Yeah, I'll just point, that's what we've kind of just went over, all that. Appreciate the discussion and the questions. Appreciate FEI's patience with us getting that taken care of, so we'll get that taken care of here and sent out to members here. Hopefully, we can do that this week, I believe, so...
Okay, anything? Mrs. Harrington?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer? Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Just so we're all straight, we have a total of four votes there, right?
Got it, four votes and four votes, yeah.
Okay, so we're perfect on there? Next, reports to the board, I see none listed, but do we have any?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, reports from the board? I don't see any. Superintendent's comments?
Yeah, just a few things. I think the board's aware, we are doing a district-wide emergency drill this Wednesday. Dennis Doolittle has, as our Director of Operations, has done a lot of work with preparing for this with our principals, but also meeting with law enforcement, family police department, and local emergency services to make sure we are up to date on our drills. So we'll be conducting a district-wide drill on Wednesday. We did communicate with staff on Friday that this was coming, and we communicated with parents today. Also, I want to point out that on our website, starting this year, and we talked about this early in the year, that we were proud to partner with Safer Schools Ohio to provide our families with a free resource for keeping our schools safe. This is an anonymous tip line, it's available on our website, it can be called 24/7, it can also be text. By calling or texting the statewide tip line, the number is 844-723-3764. You can report anything that is suspicious, suspicious, endangering you, your friends, or your school. So we did partner with Safer Schools Ohio this year to provide that safety tip line that is available on our website. You know, some of the things they encourage you to report, bullying or cyberbullying, self-harm, suicidal behaviors, withdrawn student behaviors, verbal or written threats, weapons, suspicious devices on school grounds, gang-related activity, illegal drug use, and unusual suspicious behavior. So we're happy to provide that service free of charge. That is something the governor enacted through the Ohio School Safety Center. So that is available on our website. We did pass out some literature at the beginning of the year. We have information available in all our offices and all our buildings. So I think it's very important, obviously, our number-one goal is to keep our students and staff safe, and I appreciate Mr. Doolittle, all his hard work, and our principals for all their hard work to make sure we are taken care of, not only the requirement, but going above and beyond to make sure we're doing the drills and our students and our staff feel safe.
And this is located, the number is on FCS?
It is, yeah, there's safety tip line on the homepage. Maybe, I'll get with Kelly, maybe for the next several weeks, we can highlight that to make sure it's more visible.
Great.
See something, say something.
See something, say something.
Yeah, a lot of times people assume our administrators know something, because people are hearing it outside, but if it's not reported to someone, a lot of times, we don't know. So this gives them an anonymous source that they can report things to us.
Great.
So I got asked today if, you know, the announcement or the notification that went out to the parents, is it typical that we do that?
That we let them know?
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought in this situation, if we're gonna, if people are gonna be driving through town and see a number of police cars, or wonder why there's a police car at this or that building, or, I don't think we'll have any ambulances or anything like that, but they may see a police car. So, and we also want to communicate with them that, you know, the recent events in Michigan, that we had this planned, Dennis has been working on this for quite a while, but the recent events in Michigan just kind of served as a reminder that, hey, we need to make sure we're drilling, doing the drills that are required, going above and beyond, and that we're making our people feel safe.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, I forgot I had a few more. Just to update you on the substitute hiring night, we did that on December 1st. I'd like to thank Kelly Young and Krista Miller, who spent time, and Debbie Ward, and Rhonda Waldman, and Megan Brown, all spent time late into the night on December 1st to interview, I believe we ended up interviewing close to 30 candidates. When all said and done, if we get 15 to 25 additional candidates, I'd be very happy. We did interview quite a few college students who are, most of them were juniors and seniors who are education majors, I believe I interviewed four or five of them, and I know Krista and Kelly both interviewed several. So we're excited to, it's really an online, or an on-the-job audition for them, gets them in front of our principals, so we can see what kind of teacher they may make in the future. So if we can get a number of subs, it's a timely process, you gotta apply with ODE to get your license, so we're hoping, you know, at the start of the new year, we'll have an additional, if we can get 10, 15, 20 subs, that will help us out immensely.
How long does it normally take for ODE to process?
Well, once you've gone through the whole process, they usually say 10 to 14 days. A lot of it depends on the timing, you know, how many people are applying for these licenses, so I'm hoping 10 to 14 days. I'm hoping everyone who interviewed with us that we approved, completed their paperwork to rent here, and then hopefully they applied with the state. But usually 10 to 14 days to get through ODE. I let the board know on Saturday, you know, our cold storage building that is being built behind Washington was basically blown down from wind damage. So I think I may have, I don't know if you've driven by and seen the pictures, but Dennis and I were called out Saturday afternoon to meet with Alveda Construction, who was, really had a good start on the building, the cold storage building, but as I said, that collapsed in the wind. Dennis has been meeting with them, and Alveda's meeting with their insurance company here this week, so Dennis and I will stay on top of that. But that will put us behind on the cold storage building. I don't know how far or how long it's gonna take, but probably a rough estimate, it's probably gonna set us back four months, five months, six months, Dennis is indicating. So pretty disappointed, but what can you do? It was winds, and we'll, like I said, Dennis and I will, and Alveda's on top of it. They were here Saturday roping it off and making sure that there was no hazards, so we'll continue to work with them and their insurance company. Want to remind the board, hopefully in January, we'll be switching over to Board Docs. We did have an issue with getting the agenda out on time, I apologize for that. It should have been sent out on Friday, but it was not due to an error. So hopefully, here with Board Docs, it will take care of any of those issues. So we are receiving training, I believe, here shortly. Some of our secretaries have already received training. I believe usernames may have been shared with the board, but hopefully in January, we'll be up and running with Board Docs, and we'll make our agendas a little bit smoother.
So are we getting training at some point?
Yeah, that's what we're saying, we're going to, what I was telling, so they wanted, the gentleman had wanted to do a kind of a Zoom training, but we had Mrs. Morgan come in that last meeting, we were kind of booked that night. So what I'm hoping is that we can let you log in at your convenience and see it, you know, and then, because really, we really want to make it our organizational meeting live. I mean, we want it to be up and running.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, this week, if we can get you your username and password, which we already have, but I haven't had to, we gotta show you. So I thought of a couple of different things, if you have some free time, maybe you could either stop in, and we could sit down and kind of do a quick tutorial with each person, or we can, I don't know, if Krista or Kelly has time, we could do like a little tutorial online that you can just watch over and over, you know, like a little mini YouTube. Because it's very self-explanatory, but you gotta know where to go. You gotta know what to press and what to look at. We do have the organizational meeting up and running, I found it, it was in a different spot. It's all ready to go, but it's not gonna be much help if we haven't trained you on it. So you, you know, once you get in there and see it, we want to caution you of where you don't add and subtract things, because, you know, it's still a public document. There's certain spots, so it's very user-friendly. If you can look at email, you can do it, but you gotta know where to press, because we hide the draft. Not on purpose, Board Docs does that, not us. We keep telling them, you need to put that little button somewhere else, because, you know, you forget that, you know, because board members are allowed to see the draft as we go, and then when we make it live to the public, you know, we make it live, featured, we call it. So, yeah, I'm excited, it's looking good, I just pulled it up because I thought, you know, we had time, we...
We're fortunate Pam has experience with it, because the rest of us do not.
I really think you guys are gonna like it. Of course, I gotta quit saying it's easy, because it took me like a year to get like really good at it. Yeah, I was a tech director.
It's easy after you know it.
That was never shared with any of us, Pam.
But I think what you're gonna, what I think's gonna be nice is that at Friday afternoon, it goes live, I mean, but you're gonna have a draft all week to look at and say, oh, you know, and there's certain things that we see all the time, and we might think is okay, and you're gonna look at it and go, what are you guys doing, you know? So that was, that's the beauty of having the draft for a while. But once it's featured, you can't make changes. So we try to feature it, and I'm not sure if that's Krista's, or Megan's, or mine, I'm not sure yet who does that. We tried to do it by 4:30 on Friday nights, and then you have all weekend, you know, just like you would if you did the paper, so, the paper copy, you know. So, yeah, it's exciting, because it's looking good. It's even got our little F up there now, I'm impressed. So she's working, she's working on it, designing it, but it's really the functionality that we want, not the bells and whistles as much, we want it to do what we want, and that's to be transparent.
And then the last comment I had is just a reminder, Friday is our last day for students and staff before, for winter break. I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, and hopefully our students, our staff, and everyone here, and everyone watching has time to relax and spend time with family and enjoy the holidays. That's it.
Okay, board comments? If I could jump in here then first, I inadvertently skipped over my Glenwood report. And so really quickly from Meg Simon, we'd like to celebrate our physical education teachers for hosting Jim Stefan. Jim came to Glenwood and gave presentations to each grade level. The staff and students enjoyed learning about how fitness and a healthy lifestyle can be. Thank you, Jim. And then we would like to, this is from Meg, would like to thank the Glenwood Staff, PTO, and Movement Church for providing a Christmas shopping and family dinner event last week. Students shopped with volunteers, then enjoyed pizza, cookie decorating, and a movie, a holiday movie hosted by the Movement Church. It was a wonderful night, so I apologize, I skipped that before. Okay, any other board comments? I will just follow with, as Mr. Roth already shared, that we're looking forward to a little break here, although administrators don't get much of a break. But we certainly want to wish everyone out there a really happy holiday season, and just be safe, and rest up a little bit, and we'll come back and we'll do it again. We're making great progress in this district. Okay, so at this time, we need to have an executive session tonight for the purpose of employment and compensation of personnel, purchase or sale of property, and negotiations with employees. So could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Russell, second?
Second.
Mr. Cooper? Okay, are we moving out, or?
Yes.